Good evening. It is 6 o'clock, May 6th. And I call this meeting of the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen to order. If you'll all join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So, um, the election was yesterday. We have two new board members. We have Jamie Gilman and Ralph Kay. Congratulations, gentlemen. So I'll entertain a motion to reorganize the board. All right, motions made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for chair.
Motion, Jason Price.
I'll second him.
Great, discussion?
Not necessary.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, entertain a motion for vice chair. Nobody, huh? So you don't? All right. All right, I'll second. Discussion? No? No discussion?
No discussion.
All right. And then I'll entertain a motion for Ralph Kay to be the clerk. Okay, so I'll second that. So I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, move, so moved.
All right. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, welcome aboard, gentlemen. All right, so, first order of business is I will entertain a motion to approve payroll, payroll warrant number 23 for $343,326.78. School warrant number 1091 for $147,344.68. General fund warrant number 1092 for $54,025. General warrant, general fund warrant 1093 for $161,554.24. And the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and fire highway 1094 for $474,007.56. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we have some spending requests. And then, uh, we have one here from the cemetery commission. It just came in today. It's, they have water leaks that they can't find, and the water department hasn't been able to locate them either. The amount of the request is $800. I want to stand a motion to approve that spending request. Any discussion?
Straightforward.
All right, so, um, the system is currently leaking 14 gallons an hour, which has caused large water bills, which otherwise should be at the minimum amount. And Kirk, you said they, this company could probably find it in about three, three hours?
They estimated three hours to find the leaks.
Right.
What do they do? Uh, they use something with underground radar and sound waves and listening devices. It's quite a, quite a science to do it. But this company specializes in, they think they can solve it pretty quickly. We've been plagued by these leaks for three, at least three years, and it's becoming frustrating.
It could be several, right? Could be several.
Yeah. We found several and repaired them, but these most recent ones, we just can't seem to find.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kirk. We have one from Parks and Rec for $2,600. For Morrison Fence. And the description is fencing at both ends of the children's play area for safety and delineation. I'll entertain a motion to approve that spending request.
I will abstain.
All right, I'll second. Discussion?
Do we need to get one-on-one call?
Not under $10,000. As long as we do due diligence, whatever that means. Brandon?
Should be a little diagram on the back where the fence is going. It's, a few reasons for this. One is a parent request. Some parents have been requesting. They had that fence. It's also part of our common master plan, which we intended to put fencing in that area to begin with. And, uh, it's also, hopefully, we'll be able to do more fencing in the future to kind of enclose that area and kind of delineate it. So it's obviously a children's play area and help keep kids in. And, uh, you know, just let people know it's a kid's area. We do have signage up that explains the rules for the children's area. And we put the fence up, we can lower them at the entrances. So people can have a better idea of the rules there, too. So.
How high is this?
It's, uh, three feet.
All right. Anything else? Do you want to add anything?
Contain the runners.
Yeah, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a request for transfer of appropriations with restrictions for $4,000 from the assessors from their revaluation salary conversion account to their revaluation other expenses. And the reason is it should have been listed as an expense account versus a salary account. So, I want to stand a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? And then this will go to the finance committee as well. All right, and then we have a reserve fund request. Next to Jamie's name. This one is for $6,100. And it is for, it's to be transferred to police officer expense because the balance is at a negative $1,371.99. Funds to pay utility invoices and, um, groundskeeping. Because the utility costs have had a major increase. All right, I'll stand a motion to approve that.
So moved.
All right, discussion? All right, all in favor? So we have a, um, request for property access for 29 Forest Street and 50 Grove Street for the EPA. You want to comment on that? You or Brandon?
Uh, as part of our continuing assessment, they were here in the fall, did some testing, and they're just coming back to do some more assessment of the area.
That's the, as, the Aztec asbestos testing, right?
Right. The part that hasn't been remediated. I guess they didn't get all the information they wanted the first time around, so they're just coming back to do a little more testing.
Okay.
This is the remainder of the area that's not remediated.
Correct.
All right, I want to stand a motion to approve, um, Ben move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, um, we have a 6:15 poll hearing, so we're going to jump down to the town administrator search committee appointments. So we've got several resumes for town administrator. And because we have a new board and, uh, Brooke was leaving, we opted to ask for appointments to a committee to look at the resumes. And, um, we have a list of people here. I'd like to pick three. You guys have all the resumes there? Three.
Why can't we want a limited difference?
Do you want to have more than that?
Everybody in this room.
Five people? All right.
Got two. Got two, one move?
I think we had five last time. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to...
You got to read all the names, too. Good luck.
He does the setup. I will make a motion to accept, to nominate, to appoint.
Appoint.
To appoint Karen Huber, Robert Philip Housen, Holly Kalaski, Mr. Joe Trenikosta, and, yeah, Mr. James Messerio?
All right, we'll take it.
To the, uh, committee, to the search committee for new town administrator.
All right. Motions made and seconded. Discussion?
I think they're all great. They're all great picks.
Ralph?
I think they're all great picks, too, and that's why I wouldn't want to eliminate now, or eliminate to three. I think, uh, they will all have pretty solid input into who gets chosen. And we really need a strong effort. I think if somebody could have been strong here.
Mm-hmm. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so everyone that's listed on there can go and get sworn in at the town clerk's office. She's not in today, so.
I can hear tomorrow either. She's sick.
Overdid it yesterday, huh?
When you go get home till after midnight.
Uh-huh. All right, so as soon as they're sworn in, they'll get all the resumes and they can start. All right, 6:15, we got our poll hearing for Green Road. Have a good night. We have someone from the grid here? That's you?
Oh.
Two of you from the grid?
They're not from the grid.
Okay.
My house.
Okay. And your name?
Lady Martinez.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Pleasure.
And who else is here for that poll hearing?
Emily Ledoux.
Okay, it's your house? All right, um, so do you want to tell us about the poll?
Of course. Uh, so we're looking to install pole 61, tag 80 board across the street from pole 61 so that we can properly guide the secondary wire that's going to be thrown from pole 61 onto their property, pole 61, tag 2.
Okay. And, um, are there any butters here to contest it? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the petition for a poll location.
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set?
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. All right. So, the next thing, and the biggest thing we have to talk about tonight, is, um, we're going to, it's, budget season's coming to a close next month. And there's, there's been talk about, you know, overrides and whatever else. And back in January, I said I wasn't going to talk about it. But that was because we didn't have information, and it was also because of due diligence. And I'm going to expound on why, um, I determined not to bring it up. And that's because we have a lot of debt exclusions on the town, and we have, um, several projects that we don't know where they're going to land as far as the costs and what the ultimate cost to the taxpayer and/or the user, depending on the project. For instance, the sewer plant is going through a big upgrade, and we just found out recently that there are more upgrades that weren't included in that upgrade that we're trying to get grants for. The clarifiers need to be redone, and we're going to be searching for grants to get those. And then, of course, we have, uh, so with that, we don't know what the cost is going to be. Ultimately, we don't know what the user fees are going to be. We don't know what the end cost on the fire highway buildings project is going to be. So we're not sure where that is. And, um, with the upcoming budget, we're not sure, um, basically where we're going to be doing any cuts or whatever else in order to balance. So that being said, that's one of the biggest reasons, if we don't know where all the money is going to be and how much we're going to be spending, it wouldn't be, uh, it wouldn't be right to, to bring an override onto the town. So, that being said, I'm going to open up for discussion. If you guys got anything you want to...
Sure. Do you have one? I'd like to talk a little bit about the fire highway building project.
Okay, you're going to have to resign from that committee, too, by the way.
Yes. It is becoming increasingly clear to the committee that contingency funds are getting extremely dangerously volatile. They were low to begin with. The project was, project consisted of three different buildings where there was a lot of unknowns with each of the buildings. And that created a string of change orders to the contract. And if anything knows, you know, much about construction contract, change orders mean only one thing, and it's more money. The contingency amount that the project began with was grossly underfunded. And we had some pretty large ticket items right out of the gate. You know, the, the failure of the trade school. Getting them involved in time for them to take on work, and you're talking $160,000.
And that wasn't the failure of the trade school?
I'm sorry, it was the failure to assign.
Right.
Get the trade school lined up in time. You know, $56,000 roof repair that, you know, probably we should have caught early on. And we had to replace all the insulation underneath that roof. You know, and right down the line, you know, it's the, the change orders and the PCOS are a matter of public record. So, I mean, if you really wanted to dig into the details of that, records are available, documents are available, and you're more than welcome to. But the, 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 the item that's potentially going to be a showstopper now really has to do with Massachusetts code in related to apparatus bay. With the transformation of the former Hucks building to the new highway department. There was no consideration, there was no plan to deal with floor drains in the apparatus bay. That caught us by surprise towards the end of the, end of that part of the project. And there was, you know, it was one of those things that needed to be done before we got an occupancy permit. And if anything, anybody knows anything about these projects, one building needs to be done before the contractor can move on to the next one because we're shuffling equipment between the two, between the buildings. That building, we got extremely lucky. Floor drains, there was existing floor drains. And through some research and some digging, until to an Indiana Jones adventure, we found that the floor drains were already tied into a tank buried under the property. So we locked, we locked it out. We were, we, when we dug the tank up, we found that the structural integrity was intact. It was holding water. And we had it pumped out, and we got our occupancy permit. And then the question came to be to the new apparatus building, which is the old DPW. If anybody has any idea as to that, the condition of that building and the lack of maintenance over the years, I would probably rate that building as the worst maintained building in town. The floor drains were, remnants were there, they were jam-packed, with no idea where they went. That apparatus bay needs a, needs a proper MDC tank, which needs to be tied into the sewer system. So the building committee, you know, jumped on it, and we've been trying to salvage what is there the best we can with limited funds. We have been able to salvage the existing floor drains pretty cost-effectively. The architects and the engineers have been working on specing a proper MDC tank to put out into the yard. We, based on contractual law, as well as the ability from municipal government to tackle civil engineering jobs without needing a civil engineer, we, we were hopeful that we could tie into the existing piping coming out of the building and put an MDC trap in ourselves and tie it into the sewer tank. However, it has been communicated to us by the, by the engineers that the venting of the tank will need to be brought in through the foundation of the building, into the building, and up to the roof. Which puts that plumbing potentially in the scope of the contracted plumber. Now, yeah, the problem there is that that could potentially lead to the whole installation of the MDC trap being covered under the scope of the, of the contract, which puts us in a situation where we're not really in control, and we will be potentially paying prevailing wage and fall under the scope of the, um, contract, as in the contract. With that, we're down to, you know, just over $200,000 of contingency, and we're not, I wouldn't say we're halfway through that apparatus building. So, yeah, it seems pretty clear that the money's going to run out. And unfortunately, you know, this is, this is one of those situations where we are contractually obligated to pay the contractor any monies, any profits that they would have made off of the rest of the work, sculpt work of the project. Which means if we pull out of any of the work being done on the final fire department building, that we will essentially be taking taxpayer money and giving it away for no value. We will not be getting what we, what we wanted out of that. Essentially, the contractor will walk away with their profits, and we will end up with nothing out of it. Now, it is not a sure deal, and there are some moving components of this. But it's, it's, it's down to the wire now. And it, I'd rather talk about it now than later. And again, we can... Sorry.
New guy.
Obviously, I will make it, I will make it a priority to keep the rest of the board, as well as the general public, apprised to how this goes. But the situation is dire.
Okay. And we'll keep you informed as we go along with, you know, if we find anything else, and obviously, cost savings.
And I, and I want to keep in mind that cost savings, you know, when, when I was originally appointed to the board, Mr. Petridis asked the committee, I mean, to the committee, Mr. Petridis asked the committee to do some value engineering of the project. And that allowed us to work with the contractor to try and pull some work out of the scope. Far ahead enough time to where we were penalized. And that, that effort brought back to be about $130,000, no, I'm sorry, $230,000 into that contingency budget from alternates and work that we were able to back away from. So, you know, if, if that gives you a sense that we would already be at the end of the money had that value engineering effort not been performed.
How much would it cost to finish the whole thing from here? You said you have 200, about 200,000 left in contingency, but it sounds like it's going to be a lot more than that.
Well, the problem is, is that apparatus bay, yeah, it is, uh, one problem after another that's being discovered. And it's problems that the town really has, we have no say, really no choice. They have to be remedied. It's all code stuff, right? The building was not thoroughly inspected. The building wasn't thoroughly looked at when the scope of the work was presented. So all these things are coming up that need to be remedied. Some of them, you know, it's, some of them outside of control. Things that were missed in the engineering and the architect to some degree. But again, we are, we are obligated to a certain percentage of errors and omissions under contract. As well as things being taken out of the project that really don't make any sense. That, you know, put you in a situation where we won't be able to get our occupancy permit. So based on that, it's a bit unknown. The former Hucks building was a little newer. You know, it was a little bit more, um, more of a gnome. These buildings are so old, and you touch, it's like working on an old car. You touch something, it falls apart. And certainly, that's been the case with the apparatus bay. Chimney, paraffin, the wall. So to answer your question, I don't know. I don't know.
You have anything else on that? Do you want to wait till next time?
Let's wait till next time, and hopefully I'll, we'll know a little bit more having to do with the MDC travel list.
All right. All right, Ralph, you got anything for this at the moment, or?
No.
All right. Well, public comment period. Nobody? All right. Go ahead. State your name for the camera, please.
Andy Leewell, Parks and Rec and Conservation Commission. Couple weekends ago, we did the trash pickup, and I want to thank, Nancy's not here, but we thank Nancy pretty much every time we see her, those of us on Parks and Rec, because she does a lot of things that none of us are, the others of us aren't either good at or really want to do, which is very helpful, you know, as a team. But I did want to say that it is frustrating to, for those, those people who picked up trash that day, to pick up trash for hours in the rain, and then go out the next morning and find more trash on the road you cleaned that day. So I would just suggest to people in the town that the easiest thing, you know, we hear lots of problems at these meetings, the easiest thing you could do for the town is just don't throw out your trash. You know, don't throw out your nips, and your cans, and your bottles, and your diapers, and your bags of rotting food. Just don't do that. And then that makes it easier for all of us, makes the town a better place. If you want to show pride in the town, if you want to respect your neighbors, respect the town, just don't throw out your trash. And then, you know, we can put those, that volunteer time towards doing other things. So, thanks.
Thank you, Andy. Who else? You can talk about anything we talked about tonight. Matt?
What was the, I know you, Jamie, you mentioned the errors and omissions, so what's the responsibility for the architect, contractor, when they bid a building like that? I think I know the answer, but just curious, how that works, you've mentioned percentages.
Well, errors and omissions have to do with, example of that, errors and omissions on the engineer architectural side of things. And the typical the typical percentage is 1.5 to 1.75 of the overall project cost, which, you know, in the contract, if they're within that percentage, we pay, no questions asked. We are to the point where all, you know, where we're repressing the OPM to go through all these items and kind of see where we're at. You know, some of the things have been rather disappointing. Left scratching your head as to, you know, how, how. But, you know, I would say that I'd love to just point the finger at the, at the architects and the engineers and say, you know, they're the problem here, but by and large, this is really largely self-inflicted. And it's, and it's a shame, and I, you know, I am certainly not interested in pointing the fingers or playing the blame game. I, I, you know, I, I feel it was, you know, good intent, well-meaning intent, just the lack of understanding of really what we were, what we were signing up for. I don't know if that answers your question.
A little bit, yeah, I just didn't know if there was any financial, like, what fell on them, like, the drains that they didn't know were going to meet code, like, is there any of that on them, or that's all?
Well, I did, out of fairness to them, that they were, they found a position that we were grandfathering. And didn't really have to do it, you know, and, and, you know, the, the architectural engineering companies, I believe they're out of Connecticut, and, you know, I'm not sure if it's really a lack of understanding of Massachusetts code. Massachusetts code is pretty aggressive, it evolves pretty quickly. You know, in, in the apparatus bay, one could argue that maybe we didn't know there was existing floor drains there, you know, they were in pretty bad shape. I, you know, I don't know what was going through people's minds at the time. But again, you know, it could very well be, you know, well-intentioned in thinking that we were saving the town money, but, you know, here we are.
All right, anybody else? Okay, announcements. The North Brookfield Water Department will be flushing water mains throughout town beginning Monday, April 28th through Friday, May 30th. The purpose of the flushing is to remove sediment buildup in the mains. The flushing may result in temporary discoloration of the water caused by small particles dislodged during the flushing. This discoloration might stain your laundry, especially white materials. Flushing is performed between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 3:30 p.m., and we post our daily flushing schedule on the North Brookfield Water Department Facebook page. If you'd like additional information, please call the Water Department at 508-867-0207. And then from the Conservation Commission, please be advised that the Pond and Lake Connection has been contracted by the Lake Lashway Community Association for the 2025 season to continue managing the invasive milfoil fanwort, brittle niad, and nuisance weed potamajtan within the lake. Management activities will be conducted in accordance with WPA Form 5. Order conditions executed on June 12th, 2020, and extended on February 20th, 2024. Treatments are scheduled on the following dates, May 20th, 2025 for the potamajtan treatment, June 17th for the invasives treatment one, and August 12th for invasives treatment two, if required. So. Lake Lashway Community Association has arranged for the public notice of intention to treat, to be published in Spencer New Leader newspaper on Friday, May 9th. We'll also post such notice on its website, lakelashway.org, and on its Facebook page. Prior to Friday, May 10th, the LLCA will mail to every Lake Lashway butter and known deeded right property owner a letter stating the intention to treat on the date specified above, along with recommended restrictions indicating best practices for safety and the success of the invasive growth management program. On May 9th, they'll start posting the signs, the notice of treating and warning of restriction. And then if you have any concerns, you can call Rick Mather at 781-526-1667, or lakelashway@gmail.com.
So I'm assuming on here it says it'll conform to both select boards, North and East Brookfield and the Health Departments, and I'm assuming that, is it our board of health that would shut down the lake for some, in the event of that?
I'm not sure. I think they both work in conjunction with each other.
Work together.
All right. All right, so that looks like that's all we got for tonight. I will entertain a motion to
Special Town Meeting Friday, you want to announce that?
Oh, they didn't give that to me. All right. Special time meeting Friday. 7:00 p.m., right? I'm asking. It's usually seven.
I think so. I would have to check. I thought you would have that. That'll be posted.
Hold on. See, it's in here somewhere. Nope, I do not have it. I don't think. Nope. Did you find it?
Yeah, I'm getting it.
All right. All right. All right, but?
What's the special town meeting for?
It's, I think we read the articles last week, it's for basically housekeeping, and I think there's a zoning, is there a zoning article on it? Two zoning articles.
There's a couple items for, from capital improvement on there.
Right, for the jaws of life and the
Highway radios.
Yeah, highway radios.
If you're done with that.
Yep.
The town clerk asked us to make an announcement because she's not feeling well, and she's just asking that any elected people need to come into the office to be sworn in. She is hoping to be in tomorrow. Happens to be seen. And we'll work everyone to make arrangements.
All right. So if you've been recently elected or recently appointed, please go see the town clerk.
Did you see the time the meeting was? Were you finding that, Jamie?
I could not find it, unfortunately.
All right. I think we usually start at seven. You want to text Tara and ask her? She should know. Town clerk knows all these things.
If I'll answer you a quick at a minute.
I'm getting response.
Yeah.
All the time. Don't feel bad. Don't take it personally. Chief Lou is at 6:30?
All right, show up at 6:30. You can always convince till seven if it's not till seven.
Actually, that sounds familiar.
6:30?
6:30 at the elementary school auditorium. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to recess to sign bills, and then we will adjourn after we're done signing the bills, and we're going to go off camera to sign those bills.
Soon.
On favor? Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.